Okay. I thought I would take a little bit of time here this evening, and I haven't been on much for a couple of days. Just been busy doing some things. And I wanted to take some time through some studies that I've been doing through the weeks. And I've been listening to some of the brethren, some messages, and I went to a couple of different services with them. And they are very good in understanding. And I do do my exercises. This is not a church service, so to speak. This is my little bit of a podcast room and an exercise room. And I like to, when I study, I do like to exercise some. But I was thinking about our transformation cycles. If you remember, I told you in the last one that I was going to come back to some cycles that we go through and take a look at them and help us understand individually. You know, we look at these cycles and we try to, we try to place them on a grand scale of dispensations and, you know, beginnings and endings of the world and catastrophes and these kinds of things. And many times, we miss the real meaning because of dispensational, 2,000-year dispensational character that shows up, or a 4,000-year span, or the 12 houses of Zodiac, and you span them out over 26,000 years. Well, honestly, what's that do for you other than saying, "Oh, I know that now." And it gives you some pretty good information. And if you're a person who is maybe an air sign, you can, you can actually come up with some pretty good patterns and things like that. But what does it personally do for you? I want to get into that tonight while I am exercising just a little bit. I feel my bones cracking and popping, you can probably hear them. But I want to get into that just a little bit of what does it do for you? And take these cycles and look at them now. There are many glorious moves in our complete transformation by revelation. We know that. We enter the glory of each catching up, because you get caught up many times. So I said, "The rapture's gonna happen one day." It happens every day, several times a day in you and me. But we get this grand dispensational thing out here, and we look for it, and we fail to look for what's going on in us, how's it affecting you? So we enter the glory of each catching up in our lives. And each time we are caught up, the cycle reverbs, if you want to call it that, or spirals back around and begins again. Rapture is a continual catching away, a continual catching up. And when we recognize that and see that, we can understand many great things in our lives. And until you see that, you'll never understand yourself. Oh, you may have, you may write great books, and you may read great books, and you may say, "This is what the scripture says about the next 2,000 years," or the last 4,000. You, what about you? So Corinthians, "You are a seed," okay? Let me read it. Corinthians, Paul says, "But some man will say, 'How are the dead raised up?'" That's one of the movements that's inside this cycle. "Some man will say, 'How are the dead raised up?' And with what body do they come?" Okay? What body do they come with? "Thou fool, that which thou sowest is not quickened, except it die." So Paul is saying, "You need to understand one thing for certain. The body, the seed that goes in, it is the same seed, but it's not the same body that comes out." Watch. "And that which thou sowest, thou sowest not that body that shall die." I've been thinking on these things. You don't sow the body, or I'm sorry, you don't sow the body that shall be. "And that which thou sowest, you sow, not that body that shall be." You don't, when you put somebody in a coffin, put them in the ground, they ain't coming back out, not that. Now, that person ain't even there. And so he goes on, and he says, "And that which thou sowest, thou sowest not that body that shall be, but bare grain." Okay, now we're getting an understanding of what we were. What were we when we got sowed into the earth? Because you've been sown into this earth. And what were we? We were theophany. And theophany was sown into the earth, and what does it do? Let's read it here. "And that which thou sowest, thou sowest not that body that shall be, but bare grain. It may chance of wheat or some other grain," Paul says. "But God giveth it a body, as it hath pleased him, and to every seed his own body." So every one of us, as a theophany, when we are sown into the earth, and what has to happen when it's sown in there? Now, that seed has to die or change to come forth. So what happens? How were we sown into the earth? I'll ask you that question. How were we sown into the earth? Okay? My great-great-great-great-great-grandfather was eating tomatoes and eggs and bacon and chickens and steak and potatoes and all of these things, and producing seed in his loin, passing it on to his wife. And the wife was eating the same things. The seed goes into the womb. When the seed goes into the womb, it begins to build a body. That's how your body is called up from the earth. It would have been by spoken word to bring some dust up, but we chose the sexual relationship. And when we chose the sexual relationship, we build our bodies. The semen goes from a male body into a female body, and the female body feeds and takes care of it, and the womb lays there in the water and so forth, and takes care of it. And then when it comes time, that body moves forward, okay? And that was you. You were sown into the earth, mom and pop and the things they eat. Now, let's go on here. "God giveth it a body as it pleases him." This theophany that is growing up inside this little body, God gives it a body that pleases him, "and to every seed his own body." Now, listen to this. God is a big contractor, thinking on these things. You tell me if I'm crazy. You can write in when it comes out, things like that. Talk about it in the comments, whether you like it, what you think about it. It doesn't bother me. I love to see those comments. God, the Spirit is like a big contractor. He lays out all of His material in the earth. And then He builds His buildings, okay? Now, remember, before there was a grain of seed, notice what Brother Brandon's referring to, the building. He's referring to what got laid out in the earth. Now, remember, before there was a grain of seed on the earth, before there was a sun that was ever struck the earth, your body was laying in the earth, because you are the dust of the earth. See? See, you are. God is the contractor, you are the dust, the seed. Pretty clear to me. So we see this. Now, we go through several movements. I'm just thinking on these things while I'm, while I'm doing what I'm doing. We go through several movements. I do want to say that I believe the entire gospel of Jesus Christ is based on resurrection. The Word is based on resurrection. It's all based on resurrection. That's the starting point, okay? Resurrection. There's a cycle of moves. Resurrection, body change, rapture. Remember me mentioning this? Resurrection, body change, rapture. Tribulation, wedding supper are like at the same time together, going on. Battle of Armageddon, reign of Christ, millennial reign, white throne, judgment, Megog, new heaven, new earth. That's your cycle. Now, you say, "But Brother Parnell, you just went through the dispensational cycles of what's gonna happen in the earth and what's gonna happen in the heavens and what's gonna, what's gonna take place in all these places out here? And you just went through all those. Those are gonna take hundreds of thousands of years." Takes a couple minutes in you, if you'll just get the dispensational things out of your head for a few minutes and listen to me. The cycles begins again. You go through those, swings back around, begins again at the very next revelation that breaks in your life. You have a revelation, and it breaks in your life, and you run through those cycles to solidify it and to make it an experience in you. And then you say to yourself when you're through the cycle, "Is this a part of my new heaven and my new earth? If it is, I'll keep it. If it's not, I cast it out." White throne, judgment. We'll go on to that. Now, Mother's Day, the prophet was talking. He said, "Why sure? The resurrection..." Okay, there's gotta be a starting point somewhere to this cycle. And it can have a never-ending, but somewhere in the middle of it, somewhere in it, you gotta find yourself. The resurrection is the cardinal resting place of the gospel. No matter what he did, talk about Jesus, no matter what he did, if he did not rise again from the dead, then all of it was in vain. Yes, I agree. Every religion promises you life after death, but there's one, it ain't a religion, it's a person, Jesus Christ. And he promised you that he would live with you and in you after his resurrection, and thou shalt never die. I believe him. That's the greatest promise I've ever heard. He did not rise again from the dead. If he did not, it's all in vain. It, to me, proves that he was God, proves every claim that he made. The resurrection is real, and it also is the place of the resting of the soul, the resurrection. Listen to him. It is the starting point. There we are. The resurrection starts it all. Death, burial, all those things didn't start it. Those things would have, would have come to naught, but he resurrected. The resurrection is the starting point. It's the crowning of the whole consolation. So I'm gonna say inside you, in you, the resurrection is the starting point. And Paul made that very true. Paul talked to us and told us that this resurrection, he said, "If there's no resurrection from the dead, then we're all, we're done. We're of all men most miserable." So the resurrection is the first thing that happens in you. Seed was sown, seed dies, begins to come forth, and that little man matures, or that little woman matures, she begins to see the truth. What's happening? Resurrection is breaking in your life. Then, the second thing that happens is body change. Someone told me, just the other day, I heard people, they were talking, they said, "I've been raptured, and I'm waiting on the body change." No, no, no. Listen to me. You can't go there. You can't be raptured. You can't be caught up without a body change. Here's your own prophet, Wesley. And now the Pentecost, and the same thing. Then that placing of the sun, the last sign, the last gift, then the rapture of the body, the change of the body, and then the rapture. You gotta have a body change. When you're resurrected, it's got to come through. That body change comes through those things you're seeing. Paul said that, what did he say over there? He said, "It quickens what? Your mortal body." The resurrection, when Christ resurrected, what did it do? It quickened his mortal body and gave him a glorified body, and he walked out of that tomb. The resurrection does the same thing for you. "I have already had my body changed. It's already happened." Now, at some point, it's going to come to its completion until it doesn't grow old, it doesn't get sick, it doesn't do any of those things. One man told me, he said, "If you've had a body change," he said, "How come in the wintertime you wear winter coats? Why does your body get cold?" I said, "My theophany ain't cold." It's the guy that's doing it all, and he's changing my body. He's taking me where I need to be. Now, so he says, "The change of the body and then the rapture." Okay? So you get a resurrection in you. You catch something. You get a resurrection in you. You begin to understand who you are. You have a born-again experience. You have a body change. It changes you to where your body is acting different, walking different, doing different, thinking different. Everything is different. And then comes the rapture. Yeah. Body change and then the rapture. He says, "The rapture." The church, the bride, the rapture is a revelation. To her, not to everybody, it's revealed to her that the revelation, the true bride of Christ will be waiting for that revelation of the rapture. Rapture means to be caught up, to be caught up, to understand, not to fly up in the air somewhere, to be caught up, to understand, to come to a greater understanding. You're resurrected in your new birth, and your body changed, and you begin to serve Christ, and you begin to serve the Lord, and you begin to walk in newness of life. And then the rapture begins to take place. What's the rapture? As it begins to take place, what does it say? This rapture, the revelation, the true bride of Christ will be waiting on a revelation? It is a revelation, for a revelation is faith. So you begin to build a faith in the resurrection you had. It's what changed your body. I seen where, I think it's my own daughter put a little thing out, and it said, "I know Jesus is real in me, because I knew me before, and now I know me after he took over my life, or he came in." That's, that's me. It's faith. You begin to build, and you say, "I know it's real because of what it did for me. I raptured. I got a revelation. I understand who I am." A revelation is a clear understanding. I got an understanding of who I am. Now, oh my, there's some things I need to do different. I need to change this body. I need to act different, walk different, be different, do all these things. And when you begin to understand that, then the rapture begins to take place. You catch up, you keep catching up. He goes on. He says, "For the revelation is faith. You cannot have a revelation without it being faith." Faith is a revelation, because it's something that's revealed to you. Faith is your revelation. So when we understand that, when we see that, faith is a substance of things hoped for and the evidence of things not seen. We immediately grab hold of the resurrection and the body change, and we begin by faith to put it into action. Amen. And then the next cycle, you remember? After rapture comes what? Tribulation, wedding supper, duel. You know why? Because you had so many things in you, from education, tradition, government, politics, religion, mom, dad, everybody else, aunts, uncles, and your own studies and everything else. You had so much in you, and your resurrection into the new birth, into the day, your resurrection and your body change, as it begins to change you and you begin to act different, that faith begins to build you up. Tribulation sets in. You begin to say, "But I thought it was this. I learned this. This preacher taught me this, and this preacher taught me that. I thought..." Yeah. Tribulation setting in. And you know what's going on at the same time? You're wrestling over all of those things that you thought it was, and you're having to unlearn and cast them out and get rid of them. And at the same time, there's a wedding supper going on, because you're eating on wedding supper food. You're eating on the oneness of God, the baptism of Holy Spirit. You're eating on all these great things that are coming out today in these great revelations of oneness and what Christ is doing for us, and how we come through the ages, and we come through this and that, and how that we have these cycles within us now. You're eating on all this, and it's building you up, and you're having a great time, and you're rejoicing over all the beautiful things that you see. This tribulation you're wrestling with. Did I have anything right? Well, to be honest with you, when you come to that resurrection, and you begin to change in your body, and you take on the rapture, and it begins to catch you up, anything you're having tribulation with, probably wasn't right. Probably wasn't right. Anything that you're eating on and saying, "Oh my, this is good. I've never seen this before." Probably right. And you begin to throw everything out. All those virgins that slept, they rose. Think about Matthew 25. "And trimmed their lamps and went into the supper." So here's a supper going on. The virgins trimmed their lamps, went into the supper. It's a great revelation if you can understand it and put it in yourself and stop thinking about a big age somewhere and think about you. And they went into the supper. Is that right? You're a virgin. You trimmed your lamps. You got rid of all that tribulation stuff. You got rid of all that tradition. You trimmed your lamps and went into the supper. Is that right? And the rest was left out in the tribulation period. Stop thinking about people as being the rest. Think about all the things that you threw out, all of the dogma and the creed and the lies and the catechisms and the, and all of these things that men brought to you, and you took them all, and you began to, in your tribulation, you cast them out. You went on into the supper, and all of those things, the rest was left for the tribulation period, right? Weeping and wailing and gnashing of teeth. Just let it go. Let them have it out there. Those that want that, let them have it. Let them be the weeping, wailing, and gnashing of teeth. That's the church, not the bride. The bride went in. There's a whole difference between the church and the bride. Yes, sir. There's a whole difference between religion and spirituality. There's a whole difference between a church and a new birth. There's a whole difference, and we need to catch this difference. Yes, uh-huh. Went into the wedding supper. Notice, boy, the seals was broke. Why? The last church agenda ended. "To reveal these truths." Why? "The lamb broke the seals, revealed them to his bride, his subjects for his kingdom." You're building a kingdom now. Resurrection and body change and rapture, tribulation and casting all these things out, and then coming into and eating on the wedding supper. You're building a kingdom. Eat and make your body. This is the kingdom. So we see this. Now, we're at the wedding supper. Listen. "Granny Lord..." Amen. "Granny Lord, that we will not be considered among them, not be considered among the traditions, not be considered among the creeds and the dogma, not be considered among the churches, not be considered among the government and the politics and all these kinds of things. Granny Lord, that we will not be considered among them, but we'll be in the call to the wedding supper, for we do recognize it is Jesus among us today." The wedding supper is going on. We're going in with him, out of the world, into him. Let us walk forth in that city and come out with him. This is what it's all about. Resurrection, body change, rapture. Sort out those tribulation doctrines. Throw them aside. Tribulation creeds, throw them aside. Eat on the wedding supper. Build and make your body. It's sweet and bitter. It's, it's the, it is what's really happening. Stop trying to say to yourself, "Well, the bride, she eats, and she gets sweet, and she gets bitter." That's, that's fine. That's fine. What about you? What about the bitter and the sweet in you? That's what, that's what means something. What is bitter to you and what is sweet to you? And what you do is you work on building that body. Then the next step after the tribulation period and the wedding supper, you know what the next step is? The battle of Armageddon. Yeah, Brother Parnell, they're gonna have a big battle, in the Battle of Armageddon, and the whole world's gonna be destroyed. It's gonna be wiped off. Oh my, it's gonna be a terrible thing, and all humanity'd be wiped off. Stop thinking that way. Think about you. When you come through that tribulation period. Now, the battle started in heaven. Now, the battle started in heaven. Are you looking? Right here, heaven. The battle started in heaven. It'll be finished on earth. It started in the mind, it'll be finished in the body. Okay? In the form of Armageddon. Now, remember, think about this. After the fourth chapter of Revelation, the church is gone. Now, you read the fourth chapter of Revelation? You know what the fourth chapter is? Caught up. See, church tradition is gone. When you get your new birth and you have that change of body and you go through that tribulation and wedding supper, then you come into the Battle of Armageddon, the church is gone. All of that's wiped clean. Your slate is, your slate is clean. It's a whiteboard with no dots, no black, no nothing. Do you see now? These four horse riders has went out, the church is gone. And everything that happened to the church happened up to the fourth chapter of the book of Revelation. Everything that happened in the Antichrist move went up to the fourth chapter. And the fourth seal of the book of Revelation, both for Christ and Antichrist end up. Okay? So under the fourth seal, what you have is everything comes to a head. It's tribulation after the tribulation and it's wedding supper. We built our body and the Battle of Armageddon is a wiping off of all of those things that troubled us. He wipes it off. And the fourth seal of Revelation, both for Christ and Antichrist end up. And Antichrist comes to his doom and with his army and Christ comes to, with his army for the kingdom. So we see this. This, it's in you. If you don't put it in you, forget seeing it in a dispensation. Forget seeing it in the zodiac. Forget seeing all those things. Put it in you. After the Battle of Armageddon, after you've went through all of that great tribulation and trial and you're eating on the wedding supper food for your day, then comes what? A great rest. Yeah. Resurrection, body change, rapture, tribulation, wedding supper, boom. All of that junk you had in your head. All of that stuff that, that you thought was so important and so real and so, oh, you just, you had it all figured out. And all that dogma, everything. That resurrection and that body change and that rapture and that wedding supper destroyed it all. Now here you are. It ends up in a time for the world. Listen, what is it? The seventh seal. The seventh seal comes in under the fourth seal. And the fourth seal is the battle of Christ and Antichrist. It is the battle of the resurrection, body change, rapture and wedding supper against the four horse riders of the white, the red, the black and the pale. And it's the battle and they all come up under that battle. Listen to him. That's what this is. It's the seventh seal. It just ends time for the world. It ends time for us. It ends the time for that. It ends the time for this. It ends time. Everything just ended up on that seventh seal, under the fourth seal. I hope you can get this. And now, how is he going to do it? I like this. Cause we got it all figured out, you know? How he's gonna come riding back on big white horses with a sword and he's gonna cut the heads off all the devils and demons and he's, people are gonna, gonna be shouting all over the earth and cheering and throwing people into the lake of fire and hell and, and, uh, well, we got it all figured out. No, no, not at all. Now, how is he going to do it? That's what we don't know just yet, isn't it? We don't know. It's even the time for all things. And listen, it's the time for the ushering in of the millennium. Hmm. Well, I thought that was way down the road, but the millennium, if you can let it happen, ushers itself right into you. Have you had a new birth? Have you had a body change? Have you been raptured, caught up time and time and time again and your faith building and creating a body that you're eating on? Have you? Have you come to that point that tribulation and all the stuff that, that had your mind so, so messed up, it's gone? And your wedding supper food is building that body in every way that you want it to? If you have, then we've come to the Battle of Armageddon. Listen, after the Battle of Armageddon, he says that it's the time, it's the seventh seal, under the fourth seal, ushering in the millennium. Ushering into you, the millennium. Forget out here, I ain't worried about them. They'll get their rewards and their deeds for whatever they're doing, but this is me and you and this is the individual. And he says, look, this is the ushering in of the millennium. Notice, the breaking of this seal was so great, this seventh seal, that heaven was hushed by it in silence for the space of half an hour. Now, it is great. What is it? It was hushed, the heavens. There wasn't a thing moved for half an hour. Now, a half an hour might not be long if you're having a good time. But in the suspense between death and life, yeah, it seemed like a millennium. It was so great. That's what it is. When you're at the fourth seal and there is a battle between death and life and you let that resurrection, that, that body change and that rapture and that wedding supper and that Battle of Armageddon, you wipe all of that off. You clean it out of your system. You get rid of that junk. A great millennium gets ushered in to you. A great rest. Isaiah 28, if you wanna go read it. The rest that was promised is the rest in us. There wasn't a thing moved. It's a millennium. It's so great. And then what comes after the Battle of Armageddon? The White Throne Judgment. And you say, oh yes, Brother Parnell, everybody's coming up out of the oceans, out of the seas, out of the ages, out of the, out of everywhere and they're all gonna come up. They were birthed into the earth. They lived in the earth. They were judged in the earth, just like you and I are being judged. And the White Throne Judgment has been here in the earth since Genesis, the third chapter, when the White Throne Judgment was set up and he began to give out the judgment to Adam, to Eve, to the serpent, to the earth and everything else. And the final thing that he gave was, out of the White Throne Judgment, a redemption plan to reconcile the world unto himself. You're so afraid of the White Throne Judgment when if you've got it in you the way you are supposed to, you will give everything you can to bring on the reconciliation and redemption of the world. The reconciliation and redemption of ocean life, animal life, foul life, human life, everything. You want it all back where it was at. That's the White Throne Judgment. It's not some scary fiery eyed, mad, crazy god that's angry because nobody would obey him. No. It's a Christ whose eyes are full of fire and he's going to purge everything. That White Throne Judgment purges everything right here. When it comes up in me, Gog and Magog can raise up after the White Throne Judgment. There can be things come up, but I already cleaned myself out. I already had my experiences coming through those transformations. And you know what? Gog and Magog, fire comes down out of heaven. Here's heaven. Fire being the word comes down out of heaven and that little Gog and Magog that raises up in my flesh and says this or this or this, and it's against the judgment of the White Throne, then I just purge it out, just exactly the way the fire came down from heaven and purged out the Gog and Magog. And then it said, the temple of the Lord is set up. Here it is. And when the temple of the Lord is set up, it's new heaven and new earth. The river of life runs through it. It's a beautiful place to be when you listen and pay attention to the resurrection, the body change, the rapture, tribulation and wedding supper. Battle of Armageddon, millennial reign, White Throne Judgment, new heaven and new earth. When it's new heaven and new earth, can't anything mess with it. It's sovereign. Listen, there's a big difference, and we'll get into it, between spirituality and sovereignty. A lot of people are spiritual, but they're not sovereign. You want to be, you want to come to the place of sovereignty. We'll talk on it. This is a great revelation. This is not some dispensational stuff over hundreds of thousands of years. This is a cycle out of the book of Revelations that goes on with you every moment. You may catch a revelation about oneness and it cleans ev, all those Trinity doctrines and all those Trinity doctrines and all those demons about, about, uh, all the things that, that, that you couldn't understand under the scripture. It cleans it all out and you come to a oneness of, a real revelation of oneness and you're completely clean. You completely understand it. And you know what happens when you come to that point of complete cleanness, complete understanding, a complete revelation through those seven cycles or those seven movements of glory within the cycle of transformation? You know what happens? You become sovereign. What do you mean, Brother Parnell? Let somebody walk up to you and challenge you and try to defeat your revelation on oneness. You're totally sovereign. There's no challenge. There's nothing there that they can challenge. It's solidified. It's sovereign. You know who you are and nothing could change it. Oneness. If somebody were to walk up to me with a gun or with a sword and say, I'm going to shoot you in the head, I'm going to behead you unless you are willing to walk away from that oneness doctrine. I'm totally sovereign. Remove my head, shoot it, whatever you're gonna do, you'll never move me from the oneness doctrine. That's what sovereignty is. Spiritual is working your way through things. Working your way through resurrection and, and body change and rapture and all the way out. But when you come to the end, or when you come to that point that you are complete in an idea, in a, in something that the Lord moved for us to understand and you come to that understanding? Uh-uh. Nothing will move you from it. I see these guys, they walk off from this. They disbelieve the, the messages. They walk off from what we believe. They, all kinds of things. I can't, I can't do it. They write me, they say, Brother Parnell, you know William Branham had bias. You know he had prejudice. You know he had doctrines. You can read and see where he contradicted himself. I don't argue with them. I tell them, he lived in an age that had bias and he was taught it. He lived in an age that had prejudice and he was taught it. I can see that. He lived in an age where that scriptures are formed different now with different understanding and deeper understanding than they had then. I can see that. You don't have to fuss with me, but I tell you something else I can see. I personally seen the pillar of fire in the meetings. I personally seen the dead raised, the blind eyes opened, the gorders fall off on the platform. I seen men with shorter legs than others who took their lifted shoes off and walked to normal. I seen, I seen crutches. I seen, I seen things come off of them. I seen, I seen the pillar of fire. I watched it move through. I listened to discernment after discernment after discernment and it was perfect. I seen a prophet. I don't care what you see. I seen a prophet. I'm sovereign on that issue. If you're writing me about it and you're watching this, stop writing me about whether or not William Branham is a prophet or a seventh messenger. Don't write me about it. I'm sovereign. That's it. I know who he was. I know how it fits in the revelation. That's sovereignty. We'll get into that. Maybe some of us will find out that we're just not so sovereign yet. But we will be, we will be. Love bless you. I hope this has been a help to you and I finished my exercise. I kinda got caught up in it, so. Love you and I'll see you next time. Lord Jesus, thank you for this wonderful revelation.